Testing, one, oh, testing one two, testing, okay.
Thank you.
In an effort to address injury prevention and mortality rates, the Monroe
Check one two, check.
Testing one two, testing, okay.
Hi. Yeah, I'm the new kid down in the auditorium. Yeah, yeah, I hopped from the assessor up to the auditor.
Oh, so you worked for Judy?
But I, um, years ago, uh... Um, yeah, so I knew who you was. Yeah. Yeah, I know, small world. Meeting the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's Wednesday, November 27th. I will note that all three commissioners are here and present in the Net U Hill Room. And we do have an amendment to our agenda.
I move to add item L, corrected memorandum of understanding with courage to change.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of amending the agenda signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. We'll now begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we will move on to our department updates. And we have Ms. Kelly joining us from the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Waste water detections of COVID are continuing to decrease as well as emergency department visits for COVID-like illness. Indiana health officials have announced the first flu death of the season. Appointments can be made at our public health clinic for free flu shots. That number is 812-353-3244. And I wanted to provide an update on the RSV vaccine. So typically, this is administered September through January and can be given at the same time as other vaccines. The CDC recommends a single dose of the vaccine for adults 60 and older. Pregnant individuals should get a single dose of the maternal RSV vaccine during weeks 32 through 36 of pregnancy. And for infants, they recommend eight months of age or younger receive one dose of Vifortis prior to or during their first RSV season, which is considered October through the end of March in the United States.
Great, thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Giffens? Commissioner, Commissioner...
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you.
Are there any other departments that have an update to offer? You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Net U Hill. Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. Public comment is reserved time for the public to speak on any item that is not on our agenda. Each commenter is limited to three minutes, and we ask that you provide your name and your county of residence. So anybody wishes to make public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes.
I have approval of the minutes from November 20th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any comments, edits, corrections, my colleagues?
Corrections I've sent in, we're taking care of.
There is one correction. If Ms. Freeman could check the voting tallies, there's one that has a blank and then a dash zero. Thank you. All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes for November 20th, 2024 signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
I have approval of the claims docket accounts payable November 27th, 2024 and payroll November 27th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. Trumbull joining us from the Auditor's Office. Good morning.
Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for November 27th, 2024 totals $8,572,729.97. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The payroll docket for November 27th, 2024 includes $1,543,837.04 in direct costs, and the remaining $657,107.38 were for indirect costs for a grand total of $2,200,944.42.
All right, thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
Just point out to the public that a lot of that was transfer of tax funds that came through.
All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Net U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the claims docket accounts payable November 27th, 2024 and payroll November 27th, 2024 signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. We don't have any reports today, so we'll move on to new business, please.
I have approval of Action One Software Agreement. Fund name, cumulative capital, fund number 1138, and the amount of $18,700.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Krone, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Nothing exciting this morning. We need to keep all of our computer systems updated with Windows and the various programs that we run on all of them. Microsoft has offered a product known as WSUS for quite a number of years that allowed us to do at least the Windows update portions of it, but did not allow for third-party software. So we've been doing that as a process of manually updating those machines for things like Adobe, Mozilla, Chrome, and everything else they have on it. So we've looked at multiple different products, trying to find an all-in-one solution that we can automate some of this update process and make sure that we're getting everything taken care of. This agreement is from Action One. It provides the Windows updates as well as encompasses all those third-party softwares. It doesn't allow for some of our proprietary software such as Spillman or isets. That'll still be a manual process, but all the other run-of-the-mill day-to-day programs we run will be taken care of. This is a one-year agreement for a total of $18,700 a year.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Seems like a good use of resources.
Commissioner Jones?
I agree.
Yeah, thanks for finding this. Good work. All right, so let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Net U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Action One Software Agreement signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please.
I have approval of the Harrowfish Inc. Dish Machine Overflow Repair and Drain Quench Install Agreement for the jail. Fund name, cumulative capital, fund number 1138, and the amount of $2,995.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Kreider.
Morning, Commissioner. Kreider, Building Fleet Manager. I have some plumbing and HVAC projects this morning. This request is to accept the proposal submitted by Harrowfish, Inc. in the amount of $2,995 to furnish and replace the existing failed dish machine overflow tube and corresponding gaskets, also to furnish and install a new drain quenching system to cool water exiting the dish machine prior to entering the PVC drain pipe to prevent further damage.
All right, thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Sounds like this is something that's needed.
It is. Hey, you may recall, we had to do a similar project on the other side of the kitchen for the new steam kettle.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, this is one of the problems that arises when you expand the jail but can't expand all the support things within the jail, like the kitchen things, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's another one of a series of expenses maintaining the jail. So I'm happy to do it, glad it's getting done. Thank you for following up on this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Net U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Harrowfish, Inc. Dish Machine Overflow Repair Agreement signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
I have approval of the Harrowfish, Inc. Replacing Kitchen Hood Rooftop Exhaust System at the Justice Center. Fund name, cumulative capital, fund number 1138, and the amount of $14,005.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Kreider.
All right, I want to throw this out there that this is to ratify. This request is to ratify the proposal submitted by Harrowfish, Inc. in the amount of $14,005 to remove and replace the failed kitchen air intake and failing commercial kitchen exhaust fan and housing servicing the jail kitchen on the rooftop of the Charlotte Zito Justice Center. This work will also require a crane to place the new equipment and remove the old from the roof.
All right, thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Giffens? Commissioner Jones?
Sounds like a pretty major undertaking.
It is.
Yeah. Well, it's needed.
Definitely. All right, thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Net U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of ratifying the Harrowfish, Inc. Replacement of the Kitchen Hood Rooftop Exhaust System at the Justice Center signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
I have approval of the Harrowfish, Inc. Preheated Coil Rework at the Justice Center. Fund name, cumulative capital, fund number 1138, and the amount of $19,220.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Kreider.
Okay, this request is to accept the proposal submitted by Harrowfish, Inc. in the amount of $19,220 to furnish and replace the existing failed preheated hot water valves and gaskets, along with updating electronic controls and a rework of the duct and damper to better filter the incoming air to increase efficiency of the coil operation.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
Obviously, just more work on an old, old building.
All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Net U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Harrowfish, Inc. Agreement to, on preheated coil rework at the Justice Center signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
I have approval of Bledsoe, Riggar, Cooper, and James Engineering Addendum for Karst Athletic Complex. Fund name, 2023 GO bond, fund number 4817, in an amount not to exceed $77,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Whitmer, good morning.
Good morning. This is actually very exciting. The first bid project for the Karst Farm Athletic Complex project came in under budget. Therefore, we're going out for a second bid for one to two additional synthetic turf fields. In order to do that, we also need engineering, additional civil engineering, design bidding, and construction services for fields 10 and 12. Most likely, we'll end up with one additional synthetic with amenities, but we have to design everything because the fields are in a cluster, and it'll be ready to go if, for some reason, you do put a fourth one in. So are there questions about the design or what we're doing?
Do my colleagues have any comments or questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I was actually at the Parks Board meeting when this result came in, so I'm pleased that this can be expanded.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this is exciting news, and I wish you best of luck with it.
Yeah, it is really wonderful that something came in under bid because it just doesn't happen. Wait for lightning to strike.
It was substantially under bid.
Yeah, and at the risk of jumping ahead, there's an item on our agenda regarding the lighting. Is that something that would also happen with the new field? We would add lighting to the field, maybe, maybe not.
The contract that you're going to see today has nothing to do with fields 10 and 12.
Right.
It has, yes. But, yes, to answer your question, what we're going to do is put, when we do the bid out, we have one base bid and four alternates.
Right.
So basically, we're going to put the financial puzzle together, and one of the financial puzzles is lighting for that synthetic field. So that would take priority.
Right.
So we have our priorities and we'll got it, put it together.
Whatever can work, yes. And these are the fields 10 and 12, which you identified earlier when we first went through this process, as the ones that would come next.
Correct. I mean, in our dreams, we were thinking all these four fields will become synthetic. We had no idea that we might be able to get three of them out of the four. So, yeah, it has always been on the plan, the long-term plan, and we want to make sure we don't do anything, construction-wise, that would prevent someone from doing additional work in the future. So, you know, we'll get everything underground, we'll put things, you know, we'll do it in the correct order.
Right, right. Excellent, thank you so much. This is really good news, I'm really excited, so thank you for bringing this to us. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Net U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Bledsoe, Riggar, Cooper, James Engineering Addendum for Karst Athletic Complex signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
I have approval of Go Express Travel Service Agreement. Fund names, county general and parks, non-parks reverting and non-reverting. Fund numbers, 1,000, 1178, and 1179, in an amount not to exceed $7,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Whitmer.
Yes, we use Go Express and rural transit for youth and adult trips, mainly for day camp and for some, we'll call it, adult trips. And what happens is that right now, we work with rural transit, but sometimes they cannot meet our needs for a variety of reasons. And we also really like to use Go Express when we go out of the county. For instance, to the Children's Museum in Indianapolis, we like to take the Go Express vehicles.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, it just, I'm glad that you're able to provide these trips.
Commissioner Giffens?
I want to compliment the Parks Department for doing these summer camps for kids. I think outdoor things are just really, really important.
Yeah, it's really great. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Net U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Go Express Travel Service Agreement signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
I have approval of the Conservation Easement for Jackson Creek Park.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Whitmer.
Yes, this is required by the Highway Department for forest mitigation from the impact of building the Karst Farm Greenway South Connector Trail. It would be from the Parks Board to the Commissioners and the Highway Department. At some point in the future, the Park Board will donate the park to the Commissioners, but we're not ready for that yet. But we do need to put this conservation easement in place. This way, we don't have to buy extra land or do anything else. We have a park, they want to put trees on it, and some other, you know, I can't remember what, they were going to put trees in, we'll say bushes and whatnot, in the conservation easement. Win-win for everybody.
Great, thank you. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Sounds like a good idea.
Commissioner Giffens?
This is pretty creative, actually, so kudos to both of you.
Yeah, works out well, really good, really good move. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Net U Hill. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Conservation Easement for Jackson Creek Park signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero. Thank you, next item, please.
I have approval of Musco Sports Lighting LLC Agreement for Karst Athletic Complex. Fund names, ARPA and Convention Visitors and Tourism. Fund numbers, 8950 and 1127, in an amount not to exceed $745,500.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Whitmer.
Yes, this is very exciting also. It'll provide new lights and poles for fields eight, nine, and 11, and it'll retrofit HID lights to LED lights on fields six and seven. So it should improve our utility invoices, hopefully the cost will go down, plus having one, two, three more fields lit will be a tremendous impact. We are so excited, I can't even tell you, the staff is so excited because it's almost like having new fields that you can actually play later in the evening because, what, it gets dark in the fall at, you know, five or six o'clock.
Big difference. Comments or questions? Commissioner Giffens?
And congratulations on getting this done.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this is, this is going to be quite a shot in the arm for soccer in our area and all the other things that happen.
Lacrosse, too, is a sport that is gaining traction. Oh, Quidditch, they have renamed it, but hey, y'all know it as Quidditch on Harry Potter. We do, we have had a Quidditch tournament, and no injuries, no flying problems, and I don't think the airport has had any problems also.
Awesome, magical. It's really exciting to see this project moving forward. All right, let's see if there's any public comments on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Net U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Musco Sports Lighting LLC Agreement for Karst Athletic Complex signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next item, please.
I have approval of the interlocal agreement with the town of Steinsville regarding planning and zoning code authority.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. We have Ms. Nestor Jellen joining us via teams. Mr. Roddy's in the room. I don't know who wants to speak, but...
I can start, and then Justin can hop in as needed, but basically, what's before you today is to approve an interlocal agreement with the town of Steinsville. This is a five-year agreement. We've gone through this with Steinsville since about 2011. The purpose of this interlocal is to be able to administer our zoning and subdivision control ordinances for the town of Steinsville, which is incorporated. This is so that they would be able to qualify for the National Flood Insurance Program because we administer the flood plane ordinance. In order for them to have a flood plane ordinance, they have to go ahead and adopt our entire ordinances. So this is a five-year approval. We went to the town of Steinsville and spoke with their town council, and they were very amenable to signing this again for a new five-year term. And I answered a few questions for them, and everyone was very happy with the way things were, so.
Great, thank you so much. Let's see if we have any comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
No, not really. I'm just happy that we're able to help them out like this.
Commissioner Giffens?
This makes so much sense, and I'm pleased that this is going through.
It does, it makes a great deal of sense, and it's been a good cooperative agreement, and certainly having access to the National Flood Program is very, very important, so I appreciate this. having access to the National Flood Program is very, very important, so I appreciate this. All right, let's see if there are any comments on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the interlocal agreement with the town of Steinsville regarding planning and zoning code authority signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Next item, please.
Move approval of the 2025 Material Bid Awards for the Highway Department. Fund name, Motor Vehicle Highway. Fund number, 1178. And should I?
1176.
1176, thank you. And this is for all kinds of different things that the highway uses. Aggregate stone, gravel, and sand, longitudinal pavement markings, paint, a lot of different things.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Ridge?
So we advertised in open sealed bids. Item one is aggregate stone, gravel, and sand. We recommend awarding to Rogers Group, Ord Road, Rogers Group, Morgan County, Lincoln Park, and US Ag. It's basically, we have a map for what quadrant is awarded. We've done this in the past, and it works well, depending on where we're hauling out, where our project is, for convenience of picking up the materials. Item two, longitudinal pavement markings, which is paint. We would recommend awarding to CE Hughes as being the lowest-most responsible bidder. And item three and four, longitudinal and transverse markings, thermo, and then removal of thermo. We would recommend awarding to all three bidders, such as we did last year, due to material supply shortages that can occur and have in the past. Again, this is the method that we had used last year. The three awarded bidders are Accurate Striping, Elite Striping, and CE Hughes. And item five, Corrugated Metal Pipe and Height-Dense Polyethylene Pipe. We recommend awarding to Civilcon being the lowest-most responsible bidder, and then per the bid documents, the two-week delivery date that was required. Civilcon is the only company that had committed to that delivery requirement.
All right, thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
People think that things just happen by magic because of the way they're so effortlessly taken care of by you, but it's not. It's a lot of hard work, so thank you.
All right, thank you for organizing all of this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the 2025 Material Bid Awards for the Highway Department signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2024-51 Cedar Chase PUD Plan Amendment 1.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Jellin?
I'm back. Good morning, Commissioners. So this is an ordinance to amend a plan unit development, which is a specific type of zoning that someone puts in place for particularly a residential subdivision most often. The amendment before you today is to actually change what's called a 50-foot PUD buffer and to remove that and only have the applicable rear yard setback be applied. This does apply to seven parcels total. It's six additional parcels from what it started as. So here we are on the west side of the county. It began with just one property in particular, but when we reviewed the plat, it made sense to remove the buffer from all of the parcels here selected. So this is, it went to the Plan Commission. It did receive a positive vote, and so it's here before you today to seeking approval of that change. So again, here's the property, and then the property letter from the owner. Basically, how this began was there was a building permit application for the parcel in blue that was denied, and subsequently, we received another building permit application for another parcel selected. And in review of this area, because we knew there was a PUD 50-foot buffer, we had noticed structures had been going in, particularly an addition that was previously denied. And so we broached the topic with the owner and told them that there was still a 50-foot buffer, and then an outline plan needed to be filed, so they did so. So that's how we got here, and the neighbors are all agreeable, as far as we could tell. We've only received one letter of support, that they would like to see this 50-foot buffer removed, and then just a 25-foot rear setback be added or be applied here. So I think that's pretty much everything. Does anyone have any questions? I'm going to also pull open the plat for this subdivision, so you can see the original 50-foot buffer. It goes from lots 15 over to 21. And so, like I mentioned, this would remove that, and it would just keep in place a 25-foot rear setback, and then anything else on the plat, such as this 20-foot rear drain easement, would still be applicable as well. But it will give these folks a bit more room to be able to expand on their homes, because most of the homes, especially on lots 15 through 19, are already built with their back of their home to that 50-foot PUD buffer location. So this will definitely give them back some buildable area.
Great, thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Giffens?
There had been a single sentence, I think, someplace in the, what we saw about stormwater approval, and I was in touch with Kelsey Thetonia, and she had no problem with this.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm in support of this.
It was a really unfortunate circumstance that led this homeowner to request this change, but it makes sense to incorporate the other homes in the neighborhood, especially since there is no negative stormwater impact. All right, so let's, is the petitioner, petitioner's representative present on Teams?
I believe so. Hannah England has their hand raised.
Right. TSD, could you promote? The attendee marked Hannah with her hand raised. Thank you. So you have...
She needs to unmute.
She needs to unmute, but you have 15 minutes to share any information you wish to share with us.
Thank you. As noted, my name is Hannah England. I represent Charles Walker. He is the property owner who initiated this petition. We discussed this briefly with the Plan Commission, but the reason for the underlying issues, Mr. Walker has a daughter who has severe physical disabilities, and the original step out of their home essentially was unsafe for her to use. The addition allowed not only additional space for her to be in the home, but it allowed a easier transition so she could go outside with her brother. The, Mr. and Mrs. Walker hired a construction company, and they were going to do the addition. They apparently hired the wrong one, because this construction company told them that because the type of addition they were constructing did not have a solid foundation, it still had air movement underneath, and because it was more or less the shape and size of the concrete slab that was there prior, they did not actually need a building permit, and they did rely on this information in moving forward. So there was no malice or knowing disregard of the county's decision. They simply relied on the professionals involved in the situation to move forward with the project. That is why they did, upon notice of the issue, file their petition promptly. We've remained in contact with Ms. Chriselius throughout this process. They took it upon themselves to pay the fees rather than waiting to see if any of the neighbors would help pay for this process. And they are more than willing to get an after-the-fact building permit and willing to pay for that, just to make sure that everything is in order so they can keep their addition. Because if they were to be ordered to take the addition down, not only would they have a major construction project, because it is tied in with their existing roof of the main structure, they would essentially have to move because their original home was no longer conducive to their daughter. And so they did this process in hopes of keeping the addition and getting things in line. So with that, we are asking that the removal or reduction of the buffer be approved so they can keep the addition, get the after-the-fact building permit, pay those fees, and be able to proceed as if, as if the information their contractor gave them was accurate. So they'd just like to get their paperwork caught up, and we do believe that this amendment will benefit all of the neighbors in the area, because there have been those that have reached out and said, you know, "We're interested, but we don't have a project planned." And we've had those that have reached out that said, "I'd love to do a project, but it'd be within the buffer." So we do believe that this modification will be beneficial to everyone, and we just ask everyone to consider that and then approve it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Let's see if there are any questions for you. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
No, it's, this isn't a case of, you know, asking for forgiveness after doing something you know is wrong, and this is the case of somebody who was wronged. But it turned out well for the neighbors, and I think that's a win-win, and I'm sorry that all of this happened, because I'm sure this has been a source of great stress for the family. But he did the right thing, and he did the right thing coming here, so. All right, let's see if there are any, any members of the public who wish to speak in favor of this item. Raise your hand on Teams. Is anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to this item? Okay, well, Ms. England, you're welcome to rebut what was not said, but you're welcome to add a rebuttal to anything. If you have anything else you wish to add, you have five minutes.
I would just thank everyone for their time and consideration, and I'll defer to the Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, with that, anybody have any other questions for planning? Any other? Okay, all right. All right, with that, all those in favor of approving Ordinance 2024-51, the Cedar Chase PUD Plan Amendment 1, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have item L.
Yes, move approval of the Corrected Memorandum of Understanding with Courage to Change: Sober Living. This is fund name, ARPA, fund number 8950, and I believe the increased amount is $115,000. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, as we were processing the MOU, it was noted that the county had incorporated $615,000, and the contract said $500,000. This is just to correct that to be the $615,000 that the Council and the Commissioner...
Great, thank you so much. Any comments or questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I'm so grateful that this kind of an organization exists within our community to help people, and that part of this is to help them acquire additional houses for people. So again, just a lot of gratitude.
Yeah, it's a great program. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I completely agree.
Yeah, wonderful program. We wish them all the great success to continue into their future. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Corrected Memorandum of Understanding with Courage for Change with ARPA funds signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. All right, we don't have any appointments today. Do you have a number of announcements? It's getting to be that time of year, so if you're interested in serving on a board or commission, please go to our website at co.munro.in.us and check out all of our boards and commissions, and you can apply online as well. And I will note that we still have free COVID testing available at Monroe County Health Department, 119 West 7th, and at the County Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive. We are going to be, county government's going to be closed, obviously, tomorrow for Thanksgiving holiday, and on Friday as well. And Friday night is the Canopy of Lights event, begins at 6:00 PM at the Courthouse Square. The courthouse is almost completely decorated at this point, and it's going to be a chilly but wonderful night. And please, we encourage you to please bring a non-perishable food item for the Hoosier Hills Food Bank at the Canopy of Lights. It's a really important time of year to share your bounty with others in the community who are less fortunate. We do continue to host virtual office hours via Teams each month, six times each month. You can see the schedule on the calendar at co.munro.in.us. Our next blood drives are Wednesday, December 11th, 1 to 6; Friday, December 13th, 10:00 AM to 3:00, and those are at Ivy Tech. Please make an appointment at redcross.org. And I do want to thank my colleagues taking control and managing everything and all of my duties while I was gone. It was a, it was a good break, and, but I do want to thank you all in the spirit of Thanksgiving. I'm grateful for my colleagues. And we do want to wish everyone out there a Happy Thanksgiving. We do not have a work session today, but let's see if there's other announcements.
I don't.
I wanted to say that Hoosier Hills Food Bank will have a booth at the Canopy of Lights. It'll be at the east end of the block in Kirkwood. If you're facing the stage, it'll be your far left. But in addition to non-perishables, people can provide money to, to help them. Last week, I was out helping with Pantry 279 Thanksgiving food distribution, and I've heard the same thing from Hoosier Hills Food Bank, Pantry 279, and others. Demand is up and donations are down. And one of the things that Pantry 279 also did was we delivered food to 379 different families last Thursday, and then on Friday and Saturday was the drive-through distribution. It was, the need is there.
The need is definitely there, which is sad. But, yeah, we, I was there on Saturday for the drive-through, and we ran out of turkeys. So, but it was pretty busy, and a lot of families in need, and that's who we need to think about this time of year.
Well, and also, apparently, because of the hurricanes that had hit, especially in North Carolina, hams and things like that were not available locally. They had all been sent off to others who were also in need, so that impacted folks locally.
Thank you all, and I wish all of our Monroe County employees, our county residents, you and yours, a Happy Thanksgiving, and we are back on next Wednesday for our next meeting. With that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.